Okay, so. Okay, so at this time, we have some honorings that we'd like to take care of and get our guests moving. And so at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Pine Ridge District.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Council. The tribe tries to do more of this, more than we've been in the past. So it's always a good thing that we honor some of our tribal members, you know, as time goes on. It's good to honor them while they're still here, you know, in the past. And it seems like we honored people after they already left. And that's, we want to start doing that while they're still here and they could receive their acknowledgement prior to getting too far up there in age and stuff. Not saying anybody's old or anything in here. I'm getting up there too. But our first one that we wanted to honor today was Nali Long, the Nali Long from the Pine Ridge Storms. This, this year, Nali Long was inducted into the South Dakota Coaches Association Hall of Fame on November 23rd, 2024. Her list of her coaching accomplishments, she coached in three state volleyball tournaments, coached in the 2024 All-Nations Volleyball All-Star Game, numerous volleyball LNI championships, South Dakota High School Coaches Association 25 Year Coaching Award in 2016, 33 years in coaching at the same high school, served on the South Dakota High School Athletic Association Native American Advisory Committee as the volleyball rep for over 10 years, 698 coaching victories after the 2024 season, top five all-time coaching victories among all volleyball coaches in all classes, featured in the National Federation of High School Record Book as one of the all-time winningest coaches in the nation, an advocate for the sport of volleyball throughout her career. Certificate of Recognition and Honor of Nali Long, the Oglala Sioux Tribe holds in high-esteem tribal members who exemplify the code of qualities of courage, bravery, fortitude, and generosity. Nali Long has been a longtime advocate for volleyball in her 33 years of coaching and was inducted into the 2024 South Dakota Volleyball Coaches Association Hall of Fame. She is hereby recognized for her many accomplishments and is a well-respected role model amongst the youth and her colleagues. It is with great honor that the Oglala Sioux Tribe hereby recognizes Ms. Nali Long for her dedicated leadership to the youth of the Oglala Lakota Nation. Presented on this 29th day of April, 2025, President Frank Starr comes up, Oglala Sioux Tribe. Nali is presented with the star quilt and the tribal flag and the certification. What we'll do is we'll have Nali stick around. When all three are done, we'll do a song and then we'll have everybody come around, shake hands, okay? Who's next? So next, we're going to be doing, Joe Will be doing Ken Manywuns.
Good morning, everyone listening. Mr. Ken Manywuns Billingsley. It's an honor to sit amongst some legends here in the game of softball. You know, they, they set it to trend for this reservation and put this Pine Ridge on the map with their talent. And then, and you know, we see it today with a lot of our softball players doing the same thing. And they're the trailblazers for this, for this game. So I should read this for Ken. Ken Manywuns Billingsley is a legendary figure in fast pitch softball. His remarkable career spans across states, regions, and even the world stage. Beginning his journey with the Pine Ridge Sioux, Ken honed his talents during a transformative era in western South Dakota. As fast pitch evolved, his exceptional skills took him beyond regional states to national and international prominence. Ken's accomplishments include being named All-American Third baseman at the 2003 ASA USA Nationals and playing in 15 ISC World Tournaments and competing at the sport's highest level in the prestigious nine-day event showcasing the world's top 48 teams. Notably, Ken's Pioneer Sioux Team claimed the state championship at the 1987 A Tournament. He also made an extraordinary impact in national Indian tournaments where he played on teams that claimed four national titles. His individual excellence earned him an MVP award and a spot on the tournament All-Star team an impressive 12 times. Ken's versatility and unwavering dedication to the sport led him to be celebrated teams such as the Pine Ridge Sioux, the Storm from Texas, Frontier Bar from Bismarck, and Nariko from St. Paul. His national contributions include representing Nariko in ISC tournaments and spending 13 years with the North Americans. Gary Young nominated Ken for this honor. Shared, I watched Ken hit line drive home runs and play defense as well as anyone at any at the tournaments. But I remember the most was when he was a competitor who had respect for the game and those who played it. Fellow Hall of Famer Richard Tuffy Londonman praised Ken's extraordinary career, saying, "I played ball with Ken for nearly 25 years. Ken did, Ken did not just play ball. He competed at every level. Players of Ken's caliber deserve to be honored at the highest level." Hall of Famer J.C. Crawford also shared his admiration for Ken, noting, "I've played ball with both and against Ken. My favorite of the two would be teammate Ken, was not only one of the best players in South Dakota, but also with the other upper Midwest." Ken Manywuns Billingsley's illustrious career is a testament to his unmatched talent, dedication, and the lasting impact he has made on fast pitch softball, both nationally, internationally, as well as South Dakota. Ken Manywuns Billingsley, member of USA Softball South Dakota Hall of Fame now and forever. Certificate of Recognition and Honor of Ken Manywuns Billingsley, USA Softball South Dakota Hall of Fame, class of 2025 Men's Fast Pitch. The Oglala Sioux Tribe holds in high-esteem tribal members who exemplify qualities of courage, bravery, fortitude, and generosity. Mr. Kenwuns Billingsley was awarded a prestigious recognition which carries great honor and recognizes his remarkable achievements as a player in the world of fast pitch softball. He is truly an inspiration in his dedication to the game and is a role model and leader amongst the Oyate of the Oglala Lakota Nation. Presented on the 29th day of April, Frank Starr comes out.
Dennis Brewer, Pine Ridge Men's Fast Ball, Fast Pitch. I may need some help. Pine Ridge celebrates the remarkable achievements of Dennis Brewer, a true legend in the world of fast pitch softball. As both a player and coach, Dennis Brewer's contributions to the Pine Ridge Sioux Team and his community have left a lasting legacy. Dennis began his illustrious career in 1969 as a pitcher, infielder, and outfielder, later transitioning to the catching position in 1983. He spent decades excelling in the game, playing alongside Hall of Famers Richard Tuffy Londonman and North Dakota Hall of Famer Ollie Fiddler. Dennis dedicated 20 years to the Pine Ridge Sioux Team, guiding them to historic victories. Under Dennis's leadership, the Pine Ridge Teams dominated the Pine Ridge League from 1980 to 1989 and also claimed the Sioux Trail Baseball League title from 1972 to 1983. A significant milestone came in 1987 when Dennis and his team triumphed at the ASA State A Championship in Watertown, securing a third-place finish at the A Regionals in St. Paul at the same year. Dennis's career is marked by outstanding individuals, accolades, including six MVP awards and over 50 All-Tournament Awards from Pine Ridge Rosebud and Yankton Sioux Competitions. His teams won a remarkable 150 tournaments over 20 years, and he hit more than 300 home runs, including an awe-inspiring performance of five homers in one day. As a pitcher, he achieved a one-hit game and recorded 242 victories. The Pine Ridge Sioux achieved an 84-4 record in 1985, losing only at the state and nationals tournaments in Reno. Known as a student of the game, Dennis meticulously analyzed his opponents with Tuffy Londonman, finding strengths and weaknesses to give their teams the winning edge. Dennis's impact extended beyond the field as Hall of Famer Richard Tuffy Londonman shares, "Dennis Brewer is many things to many people. He is respected for being a devoted father, grandfather, friend, and community member. Dennis and his wife welcome children into their home, raising them with love and care as their own. He brought positivity to his work, family, and any arena he was a part of, including the softball fields." Fellow 2025 inductee, Ken Manywuns Billingsley adds, "Dennis was the rock who solidified the Pine Ridge Sioux. He inspired through his leadership, dedication, and warrior heart. Dennis Brewer's extraordinary career and contributions to this, his community truly make him a Hall of Fame inductee worthy of the highest praise. Dennis Brewer, member of the USA Softball South Dakota Hall of Fame now and forever." Certificate of Recognition and Honor of Dennis Brewer, USA South Dakota Hall of Fame, class of 2025 Men's Fast Pitch. The Oglala Sioux Tribe holds in high-esteem tribal members who exemplify qualities of courage, bravery, fortitude, and generosity. Mr. Dennis Brewer was awarded a prestigious recognition which carries great honor and recognizes his remarkable achievements as a player and a coach in the world of fast pitch softball. He is truly an inspiration in his dedication in excelling in the game and is a role model and leader amongst the Oyate of the Oglala Lakota Nation. Presented on this 29th day of April, 2025. Signed, Frank Starr comes out, President, Oglala Sioux Tribe.
So if we can move the podium back, we'll have all three come up and we'll come through like we do in a line and we'll shake hands. Also want to acknowledge that a relative from Sichangu Land, Tuffy Londonman is here today, and he too is also inducted into the Hall of Fame. So thank you for all that. I know Tuffy does a lot of work back home too. But thank you for coming today, Tuffy.
Uwe lo, aye hoi. La kowichochaki, te wachila yela, aye aheai. La kudlicochakiha, te hiawau e lo, aye hoi. Chajemayata chawau e lo, aye hoi. Ah oh, oh mitakeasi.
Yes, our guest here wants to say a few words, give me your attention. Go ahead, sir. Just hit the button.
Thank you. Good morning, Council and Administration. Just wanted to, first of all, congratulate Kenny and Dan and Nali. But Mr. Greenwall's words were, were important, even though he kind of said it jokingly, but it is important to recognize people while they're still alive, you know? That's, that's really critical. And the other thing I wanted to say is, is, you know, this honoring is not insignificant. This is a big thing for these, for these people. But I want to, I want to encourage you guys to keep doing what you're doing. This isn't, this isn't happening throughout all of our tribal councils in our, in our nations. These kind of recognitions aren't happening, and they need to happen. You know, people that are deserving need to know that we care. And so this is a significant ceremony, and you should all kind of give yourself a pat on the back for doing it. Thank you.
There, just wanted to say, you know, these guys, I, I watched them when I was a little boy. I was like 10 or 10 to 12 years old and all the way up to in the eighties when they were playing. But talk about some superhero role models for a 12 to a teenage-year-old boy that looks up to these men. And if you were there then, these guys were stacked. I'm not lying to you, man. All of them were, had arms as big as a leg half the time, you know? And they were tough and they were strong and they led by example, you know? So you, you left a lot of good memories for some of us young kids out there that recognized all of you as heroes. Even Tuffy back in the day, man, you should have seen the pipes on him, boy. Man, I got to golf with him quite a bit in my young life. And so these guys are all role models for our people, and I appreciate everything you've done to, for, to help our youth and for our kids and stuff out there too. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Londonman, if you would hang around, I believe we have a gift for you. Okay, yeah, give us a minute or two and. Oh, at this time, we can get your attention.
I just like to say, from one legend to another. My ancestry is Oglala too. I'm, Ralph is from Upper Almanderson. Red Warbonnet was his name. He's the cause of it all. So thank you.
I knew it. I knew it, Tuff. I knew it. I had a feeling. Yes, thank you for coming today. You know, our relatives, so it's great to, when they come to visit our tribe, so. We have the Oglala Sioux Tribe welcome. Okay, so we'll move on to our next agenda item here is our next honoring, I should say. Certificate of Recognition and Honor of Peggy Janice, Distinguished Career Award, Ampetu Luta OTP Program. The Oglala Sioux Tribe holds in highest esteemed tribal members who exemplify qualities of courage, bravery, fortitude, and generosity. Ms. Peggy Janice dedicated 52 years and nine months of dedicated service to the Oglala Sioux Tribe's Ampetu Luta OTP Program, including the program formerly known as Project Phoenix. She is remembered for her invaluable contributions to the substance abuse program. The Oglala Sioux Tribe hereby honors and remembers her as a role model and a leader amongst the Oyate and the Oglala Lakota Nation. Presented on this 29th day of April, 2025, President Frank Starr comes out, Oglala Sioux Tribe.
Morning. So as you're aware, Peggy's no longer with us and her family members are here for her. Today, we honor Peggy with the Distinguished Career Award, recognizing her profound impact and lifelong commitment to the Oglala Sioux Tribe. She dedicated an incredible 52 years and nine months serving our people with 39 years and 11 months devoted specifically to the tribal substance abuse program. From the days of Project Phoenix to its evolution to Ampetu Luta OTP, her commitment was more than a career. It was a call, a calling rooted in healing cultural strength and community wellness. Peggy remained with us through every era of change, continuing to provide services with dignity and compassion until her passing in January of this year. She not only witnessed the growth of our program, she helped shape it. Peggy trained new staff, mentored leaders, and showed us all how to walk with empathy and strength. Her spirit lives on in our work, and today we give thanks for her life of service and the legacy she leaves behind. Whupla Peggy, you are dearly missed and forever honored.
Certificate of Recognition and Honor of Lloyd Knight Walker, Distinguished Career Award, Ampetu Luta OTP Program. The Oglala Sioux Tribe holds the highest, in highest esteemed tribal members who exemplify qualities of courage, bravery, fortitude, and generosity. Mr. Lloyd Knight Walker has dedicated Mr. Lloyd Knight Walker has dedicated eighteen years and ten months of service to the Oglala Sioux Tribe's Ampetu Luta Program. The Oglala Sioux Tribe hereby honors Mr. Knight Walker for his dedication and invaluable contributions to the substance abuse program. He is truly a role model and a leader amongst the Oyate and the Oglala Lakota Nation. Presented on this twenty-ninth day of April, 2025, signed, President Frank Starr comes out, Oglala Sioux Tribe.
We are proud to honor Lloyd with the Distinguished Career Award for his eighteen years and ten months of dedicated service to our program. Lloyd walked alongside us during the transition from Project Phoenix to Ampetu Luta OTP and played a steady, reliable role during the times of great change. In every position he held, Lloyd carried our mission forward, promoting healing, empowerment, and cultural strength to our relatives. He witnessed the evolution of our program. He saw directors come, staff come and go, yet always remained a grounding presence. His kindness, consistency, and experience helped stabilize our team and guide incoming staff to understand what work truly means. Lloyd's dedication helped carry us through hard times and helped us build strength we stand on today. We thank him for nearly two decades of service and for being a part of the legacy that sustains our future.
Okay, Certificate of Recognition in Honor of Sharon Littlekiller, Length of Service Recognition Award Ampetu Luta OTP Program. The Oglala Sioux Tribe holds in highest esteemed tribal members who exemplify qualities of courage, bravery, fortitude, and generosity. Miss Sharon Littlekiller has dedicated thirty-seven years and four months of service to the Oglala Sioux Tribe's Ampetu Luta OTP Program and Project Phoenix. The Oglala Sioux Tribe hereby honors Miss Littlekiller for her many years of dedicated service to the substance abuse program. She is truly a role model and a leader amongst the Oyate and the Oglala Lakota Nation. Presented on this twenty-ninth day of April, 2025, President Frank Starr comes out, Oglala Sioux Tribe.
Well, thank you for recognizing Sharon Littlekiller for her thirty-seven years and as of today, it's six months of devoted service to Ampetu Luta OTP. Sharon has been a pillar of this program for decades, offering wisdom, care, and unwavering commitment to our mission of healing and empowerment. Her service spans generations, and her contributions have touched countless of lives throughout our community. Sharon has stayed strong through every change, from leadership transitions to new models of care, always rooted in cultural values and compassion for her relatives. Her mentorship continues to help new staff understand the heart of what we do. Sharon, your service represents the very best of Ampetu Luta OTP, and we are grateful for your dedication, your strength, and the healing spirit you bring to our people every day.
Certificate of Recognition in Honor of Darryl Sam Apple, Length of Service Recognition Award Ampetu Luta OTP Program. The Oglala Sioux Tribe holds in highest esteemed tribal members who exemplify qualities of courage, bravery, fortitude, and generosity. Mr. Darryl Sam Apple has dedicated twenty-five years and three months of service to the Oglala Sioux Tribe's Ampetu Luta OTP Program and Project Phoenix. The Oglala Sioux Tribe hereby honors Mr. Darryl Sam Apple for his many years of dedicated service to the substance abuse program. He is truly a role model and a leader amongst the Oyate of the Oglala Lakota Nation. Presented on this twenty-ninth day of April, 2025, President Frank Starr comes out, Oglala Sioux Tribe.
Well, thank you, Sam, for your remarkable twenty-five years and five months of service to a program, including your fourteen years and six months in your current role. That's a really long time, you guys. Sam has served as a constant, steady force within Ampetu Luta OTP, helping to hold our foundation in place even as the program transitioned and evolved. He has not only supported our facilities, he has supported the healing journey of our clients and the growth of our staff. Sam has seen the directors and team members come and go, but has remained committed to the mission of community wellness, standing firm as an example of reliability, integrity, and service. His knowledge and quiet leadership have helped new staff understand the importance of our work and the cultural strength it requires. Sam, thank you for walking with this program for over two decades and for being the kind of leader others can look to with respect.
Certificate of Recognition in Honor of Shirley Marshall, Length of Service Recognition Award Ampetu Luta OTP Program. The Oglala Sioux Tribe holds in highest esteemed tribal members who exemplify qualities of courage, bravery, fortitude, and generosity. Miss Shirley Marshall has dedicated twenty-nine years and six months of service to the Oglala Sioux Tribe's Ampetu Luta OTP Program. The Oglala Sioux Tribe hereby honors Miss Shirley Marshall for her many years of dedicated service to the substance abuse program. She is truly a role model and a leader amongst the Oyate and the Oglala Lakota Nation. Presented on this twenty-ninth day of April, 2025, President Frank Starr comes out, Oglala Sioux Tribe.
We are proud to honor Shirley for the twenty-nine years and almost thirty years of dedicated service, and she has worked ten years and ten months with Ampetu Luta OTP. She has been a powerful presence in this work, offering heartfelt support and guidance to our relatives while holding the cultural teachings that make our program unique. Her compassion is matched by her resilience, and through every leadership change, policy shift, evolving need, Shirley has remained a steadfast advocate for healing. She has helped incoming staff understand what Ampetu Luta OTP stands for, not just the program, but as a promise to our people. Shirley, thank you for walking with us for your voice, your experience, and your example. Your work continues to make a difference, and we are so grateful to have you on this journey with us.
Certificate of Recognition in Honor of Michael Christiansen, Length of Service Recognition Award Ampetu Luta OTP Program. The Oglala Sioux Tribe holds in highest esteemed tribal members who exemplify qualities of courage, bravery, fortitude, and generosity. Mr. Michael Christiansen has dedicated twelve years and eight months of service to the Oglala Sioux Tribe's Ampetu Luta OTP Program. The Oglala Sioux Tribe hereby honors Mr. Michael Christiansen for his many years of dedicated service to the substance abuse program. He is truly a role model and a leader amongst the Oyate of the Oglala Lakota Nation. Presented on this twenty-ninth day of April, 2025, President Frank Starr comes out, Oglala Sioux Tribe.
Before the honoring, Mike asked me, he asked if he could do a speech. No, I said that.
As you all heard, Michael has many years of service, and in his current role, he has ten years and five months, just in this current role. He has consistently shown up for our clients and our staff with dedication, energy, and care. Throughout the years of transformation, leadership turnover, he has remained a strong supportive force in our program. Michael's commitment to healing, empowerment, and cultural responsibility has helped ground the program and guide new team members in understanding what Ampetu Luta OTP is truly about. His ability to adapt while holding firm to our values makes him a valuable part of our team and our future. Michael, thank you for being part of this circle. Your service is deeply appreciated and continues to help shape our path forward. And we do have Star Colts for them, and I have asked Howard to do an honoring for them. And, yeah, and if they can stand up in the front here. I thank you guys for coming, and I've been trying to do this for them for a while, but with learning our roles, which we're always, always learning new things, it finally happened. I just wish that Peggy was here to enjoy this honoring, but I'm glad her family could make it. Thank you.
Ah, ho, mi ta'ke asin.
Tally, we forgot to mention that Ken Minewoon's had the most strikeouts too, Tally. So we forgot, we forgot to mention Ken Minewoon's also had the most strikeouts too, up to bats, struck out.
Mr. President. Hey, before we get started back up again, I just wanted to thank my federal monitor for helping me with this honoring. Stacy Tulance in her office and your office for helping me get this all set up for these gentlemen and Nellie Long. And just our, you know, Savannah, she walked, she walked in here. She's carrying a baby right now, so she's gonna be having a baby. But she's my federal monitor, and she's the one that's been sitting in that office over there at the, at the resource office. And she's taken a lot of heat and a lot of batter from people, you know? And she's a young lady, and one thing that I asked her when I first met her, I met her down here at Yo Park, her and her boyfriend and her two kids. And, and I told her that what I was doing and that I would be calling on her, you know, if I got in. And so soon as I got in, I called her up and asked her if she wanted to be my federal monitor. They had nothing. They were staying here in town with the family members or whatever. And one of the things I told her that I wanted to see her, her and her man do was get their driver's licenses, get their social security cards, enroll in school and doing all that stuff. And she's doing all of it. She's doing everything I asked her to do. I said, within ten, within about two years are done, I want you to have your own car, have you doing your own thing, and maybe you guys will have your own place somewhere. And, and just giving some young couple an opportunity like that, she's doing everything I asked her to do. So I just wanted to acknowledge her today. Let me see, David, did you have a question? Yeah, I'll have to repeat that again, Davey. I'm just kidding. Okay, Councilman Japan Eagle.
So the first one is resolution of the Oglelusu Tribal Council of the Oglelusu Tribe to approve amendment of MetLife Group life policy. Motion to two thirds.
Motion by Councilman Japan Eagle. Backed by Councilman London. Councilman Rosales.
Secretary call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales. Yes. Donroy Goldsberg. Yes. Richard Greenwall Senior. Anna Halverson. David Poyer. Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Garfield Still. Blaine Little Thunder. Tyler London. Norman Standing Soldier. Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Lyle Weston. David Kelly.
Yes.
Craig Dillon. B. Frandl.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Mr. Greenwall votes yes.
Eighteen yes, two not voting. Motion carried.
Next one is resolution of the Oglelusu Tribal Council of the Oglelusu Tribe to approve option one for renewal of the Forest County Potawatomi Vision Plan. Motion at two thirds.
Okay, motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman London.
Call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales. Donroy Goldsberg.
Yes.
James Cross. George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior. Anna Halverson. David Poyer. Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Garfield Still. Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Tyler London.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Craig Dillon. Yes. B. Frandl. Troy Little.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. And Mr. Greenwall votes yes.
Nineteen yes, one not voting. Motion carried.
The next one is resolution of the Oglelusu Tribal Council of the Oglelusu Tribe to approve renewal of Daulta Dental. Motion at two thirds.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman London. Call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales. Donroy Goldsberg.
Yes.
James Cross. George Dreamer Junior. Julian Spotted Bear. Yes. Richard Greenwall Senior. Anna Halverson. David Poyer. Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Garfield Still. Blaine Little Thunder. Tyler London.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Craig Dillon. Yes. B. Frandl.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. And Mr. Greenwall votes yes.
Eighteen yes, two not voting. Motion carried.
Next one is resolution of the Oglelusu Tribal Council of the Oglelusu Tribe to approve option one for renewal of the Forest County Potawatomi Vision Plan. Motion at two thirds.
Okay, motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman London. Call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales. Yes. Donroy Goldsberg.
Yes.
James Cross. George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior. Anna Halverson.
Yes.
David Poyer. Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Garfield Still. Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Tyler London.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
B. Frandl.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
And Mr. Greenwall votes yes.
Nineteen yes, one not voting. Motion carried.
The next one is resolution of the Oglelusu Tribal Council of the Oglelusu Tribe to approve renewal of Daulta Dental. Motion at two thirds.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman London. Call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales. Yes. Donroy Goldsberg.
Yes.
James Cross. George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
David Poyer. Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Garfield Still. Blaine Little Thunder. Tyler London.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
B. Frandl.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Nineteen yes, one not voting. Motion carried.
Okay, that's it for Finance, Chair. The last one is for HHS. It's resolution of the OST Tribal Council approving the immediate removal of the homeless tent encampment in the Pine Ridge District. Motion at two thirds.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle. Second by Councilman Dreamer. Secretary call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales. Yes. Donroy Goldsberg.
Yes.
James Cross.
No.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Epstein.
David Poyer. Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Garfield Still. Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Tyler London. Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
David Kelly.
No.
Craig Dillon. B. Frandl.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Sixteen yes, two no, one abstaining, one not voting. Motion, motion carried.
Go ahead, Chair.
Okay, thank you.
So Chair, I have five ordinances to two thirds. First one. Ordinance of the Oglelusu Tribe, Tribe Council of the Oglelusu Tribe authorizing a one-time waiver of chapter one, section two, and appointing an additional special judge to specifically manage and preside over cases that come under the Indian Child Welfare Act in the Oglelusu Tribal Court for a one-year term or until funds are no longer available, and to have associate judges determine assignments of cases amongst themselves, and to assign high-profile and complex legal cases to the special judge. Motion for two thirds.
Motion by Councilman Weston, second by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston. Call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales.
One abstaining.
Donroy Goldsberg.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
David Poyer. Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Garfield Still. Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Tyler London. Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Craig Dillon. B. Frandl.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Nineteen yes, one abstaining. Motion carried.
The next ordinance for Law and Order, ordinance of the Oglelusu Tribe Council amending the reverse inclusion and removal code to include inclusion, exclusion, sorry, exclusion and removal of persons charged or convicted of dangerous drug offenses, homicide, unlawful sale of alcohol, or sex offenders, or embezzlement. Motion for two thirds.
Motion by Councilman Weston, second by Councilman Little. Call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales. Yes. Donroy Goldsberg.
Yes.
James Cross. George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
David Poyer. Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Garfield Still. Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Tyler London. Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Craig Dillon. B. Frandl.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Unanimous twenty. Motion carried.
Next ordinance that I had, ordinance of the Oglelusu Tribal Council of the Oglelusu Tribe requiring tribal chapters and tribal grant schools to include provisions in their personnel policy for judicial review of employee grievances slash appeals in accordance with this ordinance. Motion for two thirds.
Motion by Councilman Weston. Second by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston. You got a question? Go ahead. Yeah. Is that charter, grant and charter? Because you said something else. Okay. Call for the vote. Did you have a question, Councilman Greenwall? Okay. Call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales. Yes. Donroy Goldsberg.
Yes.
James Cross. George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
David Poyer. Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Garfield Still. Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Tyler London. Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
B. Frandl.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Unanimous twenty. Motion carried.
Next ordinance that we had for Law and Order, ordinance for the Oglelusu Tribal Council of the Oglelusu Tribe rescinding ordinance number twenty-four dash fifty-two amendments for curfew and continue, continuing with ordinance seventeen dash eleven as adopted by ordinance twenty-three dash thirteen regarding section five sixty-nine for curfew violations of the Criminal Offense Code. Motion for two thirds.
Motion by Councilman Weston, second. Second by Councilman Randall. Call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales. Yeah. Donroy Goldsberg.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
David Poyer. Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Garfield Still. Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Tyler London. Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
No.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
B. Frandl.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Nineteen yes, one no. Motion carried.
Last ordinance that Law and Order had for two thirds. Resolution of the Oglelusu Tribal Council of the Oglelusu Tribe approving the contract of Russell D. Zephyr to provide last will and testament services to members of the Oglelusu Tribe. last will and testament services to members of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. Motion for two thirds.
Motion by Councilman Weston, second by Councilman Little. Little Thunder?
Yes.
Yeah. Call for vote.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Donroy Gossbear?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.?
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Poyer? Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Garfield Still? Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman? Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Not voting.
Lio Weston?
Yes.
David Kelly?
No.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
B. Frandl?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Eighteen yes, one no, one not voting, motion carried.
Thank you Chair, that's all we had.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve by Councilman Japonego, second by Councilman London. Call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yeah.
Donroy Gossbear?
Yes.
James Cross? George Dreamer Jr.?
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Poyer? Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Garfield Still? Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Lio Weston?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Craig Dillon? B. Frandl?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Unanimous twenty, motion carried. Well, at this time, I don't see any districts. We'll move on to the next agenda item. Uh, secretary's office, and at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to the secretary.
Counsel, um, good morning to you all. Besides the, um, minutes for approval, I do have a personnel issue that I need to discuss with you, um, and I would like to request executive session after the approval of the minutes, simply because it is a personnel issue. Before you, I have the tribal council minutes for March nineteenth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth.
Motion by Councilman Still. Second by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston.
To approve the following minutes, the dates. March nineteenth.
The mark, the dates are March nineteenth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yeah.
Donroy Gossbear?
Yes.
James Cross? George Dreamer Jr.?
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Poyer? Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Garfield Still? Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Lio Weston?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
B. Frandl?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Twenty yes, unanimous, motion carried.
Also before you today, we have the executive committee minutes for March, March fifth, twelfth, fourteenth, and thirty-first.
Motion by Councilman Dillon. Second by Councilman Cross, Councilman Rosales. Call for the vote. I got a question, go ahead.
So, if we approved this minute for executive, then, there's, I'm pretty sure it's in those minute, one of those dates. They took action, and then there's action from finance committee to refer to council, and that's the fair. Cause they took action in executive to have the fair this year. So, we approve, and we're agreeing with to cancel, right? No, they approved, they, they motioned to not have it in, in the executive committee.
Yeah, yeah, was, is approved as executive, and you guys, I didn't hear about, uh, what's set in stone, go ahead, Counsel, Still.
When, when, when we approve minutes, we're only approving what's stated in the minutes, we're not approving any action. Right, Mr. Attorney? Or am I wrong? Because the, all, all we're approving is, is that this is what took place in, in the, in the, in the meeting. We're not, we're not approving all their actions, because those actions should be already, you know, valid soon as they're, 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 they're passed, right?
I think that's right, I think unless, for example, the executive committee takes an action, they can put in their resolution that it requires ratification, I've seen that. But if they don't, and if they have the authority to issue it, it's effective immediately.
Exactly, so all we're doing is just approving what was stated or based, um, as a, a, a document in the meeting, correct, when we're approving minutes?
You're approving that those are the minutes.
Yep.
Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston.
Yeah, and if I remember, I think Stacy in the executive board action, it was referred to the finance committee. Their action, I think, that's why finance committee took action to either hold it or not hold it, and we voted to hold it.
Yeah, looking for the, um, minutes now, but from what I recall, we didn't take official, um, action on it because the treasurer wanted to approach the finance committee.
And we did take action.
Yeah, because at the time, we had limited funds in that account too, so.
Counsel, counsel action, right? Call for vote.
Once again, for the record, this is to approve executive board minutes for March fifth, twelfth, fourteenth, and thirty-first. Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Donroy Gossbear? James Cross? George Dreamer Jr.?
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear? No, I don't have them. Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Poyer? Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Garfield Still? Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Lio Weston?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
B. Frandl?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Nineteen yes, one no, motion carried.
Thank you, Counsel. And also, at this time, I would like to request an executive session to just briefly discuss a personnel issue.
Motion by Councilman London. Second by Councilman Spotted Bear. Call for vote.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Donroy Gossbear? James Cross? George Dreamer Jr.?
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Poyer? Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Garfield Still? Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Lio Weston?
Yes.
David Kelly?
No.
Craig Dillon? B. Frandl? Troy Little?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Nineteen yes, one no, motion carried. Okay, so at this time, we'll go into executive at eleven forty-six.